Do I have a second? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Carried. Business items. Nominations to appoint the Board of Education Chairperson.
I nominate Val Ahmet for chairperson.
I nominate Shannon. Do we need to be formal and use your whole name?
I don't think we have any other Shamans.
Okay, now refresh my brain.
I'm chair. I move nominations cease.
Okay.
That we have to vote on.
That we do.
You have a second.
Okay, so do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? I don't remember how we do this part either. Do we have ballots or I can't remember?
Roll call.
We roll call it? Okay.
You have two choices and so you go through the roll call and ask each individual which of the two choices they would pick and then see if we've got a number of four. We should if we have, but now keep in mind we have one member that's not here, so. We could end up with a three-three tie, but based on that vote, the person would possibly end up being the chairperson.
Susan Fast. So we have Valerie or Shannon?
Valerie.
Valerie. Andy?
Shannon.
Valerie?
Shannon.
Christie?
Valerie.
Shannon?
Shannon.
And Pam Sidebox.com, Shannon. Can we trade places now? Four votes for Shannon and two votes for Val.
Thank you all who worked on my campaign, I appreciate it.
All right. Vice Chair.
So. Do I have to motion them?
Yeah, we have the motion, no way to.
Yeah. I move, I move to approve the nomination and appointment of Shannon Sykes as the chairperson.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by Christie and a second by Andy. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. All right, we'll move on to Vice Chair. Do we have any nominations for Vice Chair?
I nominate Andy Pearson.
I'm just gonna tell everybody right now, it's my health. I don't know what the next year is gonna bring for me, so. Keep that in mind here.
Sure.
I was not gonna accept the treasurer's job, so I know I can't do that properly.
Are you comfortable doing the Vice Chair though?
I promise I won't miss too many meetings. All right, so. With only one nomination, do I have a motion?
A motion.
I have a motion by Susan. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Val. So I have a motion by Susan, a second by Val. Any other discussion? This is to appoint Andy Pearson as Vice Chair. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Board of Education Treasurer. I nominate Val for Treasurer.
Which Val are you referring to?
Valerie Ahmet. Do we have any other nominations? If not, do I have a motion to appoint Val Ahmet as Treasurer of the Board of Education?
Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the nomination of Val Ahmet to the appointment of Treasurer of Board of Education U thirty-six.
All right, I have a motion by Andy. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Susan. Any other discussion or? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Board of Education Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Pam X.
Pam X.
You got it, Andy.
She's got daughter in my son's. I learned a long time ago how to draw.
All right. So I have a, oh, yep, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move to approve the na, I move to. Hold the nominations and appoint Pam Sidebox.com as Clerk of the Board of Education U thirty-six.
All right, I have a motion by Andy. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Val. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Board salaries.
Just FYI for board salaries, we had, just going back to the last.
Yep.
Meeting that we had in this. The per diem is fifty dollars. Per diem up if there's a meeting that goes up to four hours and a hundred dollars if there is a full day meeting, which doesn't usually happen, but. If that's how it was worded before. For the board's salaries.
Okay. Is everybody okay with continuing with the same? Per diem? Or do we have to make a motion?
Yes, yeah, make a motion.
I didn't see the back page.
Yeah.
All right. Do I have a motion to? School Board something, oh. Where are we at?
We're down on the board salaries.
You're still up, yeah, down there.
Um, I'll make the motion to have the per diem as fifty dollars for the twenty twenty-two school board meeting. Less than four hours.
Yeah.
And then anything over four hours, a hundred dollars.
I'll second that motion.
We're making it up right now though.
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion by Pam and a second by Christie, was it?
Yes.
Christie? Any discussion or anybody wanna raise their pay? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. How about Chairperson?
Yeah, for those other positions, we had four hundred dollars for each of them. You would take them one at a time, but that's what we had this last year, was four hundred dollars in addition. Not, not per meeting, obviously, that's an annual.
Yeah.
Pay for the Chairperson, that would be the next.
I'm getting ripped off.
I'm sure he chops it down.
Yeah, nope. I'm good. You can have mine. All right, do I have a motion?
I move to pay the Chairperson four hundred dollars. For the twenty twenty-two school year.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Pam. Any discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Onto Treasurer, that was also four hundred dollars. Do I have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion to pay the Treasurer four hundred dollars for the twenty twenty-two school year.
Motion by Pam, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Susan. To pay the Treasurer four hundred dollars for the twenty twenty-two school year. All, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Do I have a motion to pay the Clerk four hundred dollars for the twenty twenty-two school year?
I move to pay the Clerk four hundred dollars for the twenty twenty-two school year.
A motion by Christie, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Pam. I have a motion by Christie, a second by Pam. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries six to zero. School Board, regular monthly meetings. Currently we're on the fourth Tuesday of every month at seven o'clock.
We made that change because of.
My call.
Of my call, so we could go back to what we had before, which was the fourth Monday, or we can stay with what we have now, fourth Tuesday.
I would like to go back to Mondays.
I'd like to go back to Mondays.
I do.
Does anybody else have any? I guess I'm okay with Mon, it's still at seven o'clock, or do we wanna do earlier?
Monday's fine. Seven.
How about you, Andy? What are your thoughts?
Monday's fine with me.
Okay.
Is the timeframe good for you, the seven o'clock, or can you move it up closer to like six, or do you?
I don't know, I think people in the community kinda like seven o'clock, cause. Kids get home or feeding them supper, dinner, whatever you city people call it.
Supper, this supper.
That allow them to come to the meeting afterwards.
Yep, I agree.
Seven o'clock's fine.
I move to hold the monthly school board meetings on. The fourth Monday of each month at seven o'clock.
All right, I have a motion by Christie. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Susan. So, there's a motion to hold the monthly meetings, the fourth Monday at seven o'clock PM. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Official depositories. Currently we have Triumph State Bank and Odin State Bank.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move to have the Triumph State Bank of Butterfield and the Odin State Bank of Odin as the official depositories for District U thirty-six.
I have a motion by Andy. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A motion by Andy and a second by Pam. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Invest District Moneys. To authorize the Superintendent, Treasurer and Business Manager to invest district monies. Do I have a motion?
I'll need the motion to authorize the Superintendent, Treasurer and Business Managers to invest in district monies.
I have a motion by Pam. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Pam and a second by Christie. Any other discussion?
It was by Valerie.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So I had, the motion was you and.
Was Pam and the second was Valerie.
Pam and Valerie.
Just fire me.
You're in now.
Let's get it going. All right, I have a motion by Pam and a second by Val to authorize the Superintendent, Treasurer. And Business Manager to invest district money. Any other discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Official newspaper.
It has been the St. James Plain Dealer. It's up to the board.
Does anybody have an opinion on, do they wanna keep the Plain Dealer? Do we wanna? I don't know, what's the other one called? Observer Advocate and?
I feel like if we do anything at this point, when we left the Observer Advocate and went to the Plain Dealer, it caused a lot of ripple effect with the sports pairing. So until that kinda settles down, let's just not make any waves.
True.
I move to name the St. James Plain Dealer as the official newspaper for District U thirty-six.
A motion by Christie, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Pam. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Release of school board minutes. Have a motion?
I move to approve the clerk to release. To release of school board minutes to the newspaper after they have been approved at the following board meeting.
I have a motion by Christie, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Val to approve the clerk to release the school board minutes. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Committee assignments. It's currently academic and athletic pairing. We have Andy, Valerie and Caitlin. Andy, do you wanna still stay on there or?
That's fine.
Okay. Val? And. I would like to be on there. I did go to a meeting last night, so I don't know.
Did you take Caitlin out?
She can be an alternate, alternate, alternate. So we have Andy, Valerie and myself, and then Caitlin is a, Caitlin Keker is an alternate. Building, drones, health, safety, transportation, we have Andy and Valerie. You're gonna stay on there?
No, I was gonna say Shannon, you should probably be on there too. Yes or no?
No, no, that's fine. Andy, you wanna still be on there, correct? Yep. We can have three on there, that's.
Is that okay?
Perfectly fine, yep.
All right.
Community education, we have Pam and Susan. Or Susan, you okay with staying on there, or would you?
That's fine.
And Pam?
Yeah, I can do it.
Anybody else wanna be?
Are they still meeting Zoom? We didn't really matter that.
All right. Meet and confer, we have Valerie and Christie.
Oh no, continuing education.
Oh, did I miss one?
Yeah.
Right, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. See what I mean? Just.
One more mistake.
Yeah. Three strikes, you're out, right? All right, continuing education, we have Christie, Susan and Caitlin.
Christie, you do awesome on that one though.
I'll be on it, sure.
Susan.
Susan.
Yeah, she did perfect.
And Caitlin, yep.
We'll have Katie on there.
All right, now meet and confer. We have Valerie and Christie.
And we have created a good relationship with them, so I think we would like to both stay on that.
Okay, anybody else care to be on there, or have any interest? Uh, negotiations, we got. Andy, Pam and Val.
We just met tonight, so I would like to stay on that one.
Okay.
I can stay on it.
Andy, do you wanna be on that one or?
If somebody wants to take my spot, they're more than welcome.
I have been on negotiations before, so, I mean, if you're okay with it, I would go on there, so. I don't wanna take all your jobs away from you.
He's a job stealer tonight, just let him.
All right, person, personnel?
No, you've never ever been.
No, personnel.
Personnel.
That's why you're not sitting here.
Can I back off as the backup? Cause a lot of times it's during the day, it's so hard for me to.
For negotiations, you mean?
No, for personnel.
Oh, personnel. So you don't wanna be the backup, or you don't, you just wanna be on it?
No, no.
Oh.
It's hard for me to.
So you don't wanna.
I don't want it at all.
Used to meet more than you do now.
Yeah.
Or if you would, Andy?
We could do Andy and then the whole board could be a backup, you know, so.
Well, unless, does any?
I would do it as a backup. Or you wanna stay on as personnel though, right?
Yeah.
As I say, you do awesome at that, so. Yep, yep.
We're not gonna make it.
I'll do backup, just keep me in the loop.
Okay. All right, Riverbend Education is Valerie.
I'm off, so whoever wants it can.
She's missed more than three meetings, so she's, she's impeached.
Oh, you got impeached?
Yep.
And those would be hard.
That is one I would never be able to make.
Whoever takes it, it is, it is an awesome board to be on. They do amazing things. You meet a lot of really good people, so. Susan, are you sure you don't wanna, Christie?
Where do they hold the meetings in?
They hold them in New Ulm and it's hard for me to get there with my job. And for a while it was on, you know, Zoom, and they have stopped doing that, but it is really very interesting and the people that are there are really good.
How long are the meetings?
An hour. They're very disciplined on, an hour, they start at seven, they're usually done by eight.
Plus you get paid mileage, correct?
You get paid mileage. It is, it is, I'm not kidding. Everybody who's ever been on it, I know Diane Peterson is.
She loved it, she was passionate about it.
She loved it, and they love her, they talk about it frequently. It's a very interesting to be on, even if you just do it for a year, I would totally tell you to try it.
I'll do, could I think about it for a little bit? Maybe, or do I have to make a decision or?
And do we have to have somebody on?
Yeah. Yep, we're, yeah.
Yes, we need one.
It sounds interesting, but I, you know, I gotta see if it work out, I'm sure it'll work out okay for me, but I just don't, I wanna talk to you.
If you want to, you can just do. Because they did, that was something that came out this year that I had never. They'd never talked about before is they do like backups, so they do want a representative from our board there at every meeting. So if you take the position and then you just can't, can't neither, then every one of us should be a backup. Because they really do want somebody there as a voice, and they do listen to what you have to say.
Hmm, I don't know if I can. I don't know if I'd be able to make it, so.
Would you do it?
When are the meetings?
Um, they were opposite of ours, so they're the second Tuesday of the month. And they are in New Ulm, they're right at the old.
What time do they start? Seven?
Seven. But like I said, they're out of there by eight. You can zip through Taco John's and get a burrito, cheese, meat and burrito because it's right there.
I don't mean to be whiny, but I have cataracts and night driving is really bad for me, really bad. So I just prefer.
Where is it at again?
It's right, it's right behind the Taco John's, that long building with the parking lot in front, like McDonald's and Taco John's, yeah, you can see where I was stopped before I went in.
So it's usually the second. Second Tuesdays?
Second Tuesday, seven o'clock. And like I said. If you can't make every meeting. Then. Have the board backup for you.
So that means it would be next week Tuesday already?
Yes.
And we'll be at the school board convention, so.
And I think that that, everybody will be at the school board convention, they should be anyway.
I was there a few times. So can we have two people on there? I mean, can we alternate, I wonder?
Totally, I think, can have two on there, can't we?
I'm just wondering if we can.
I know that they would prefer one, but do you think they'll just take what we can offer them?
Well, I think that we should have one, I think, I don't think we can have two, but we should have probably one person who's expecting to be a backup, so as opposed to the whole board, which kinda means nobody, so.
If you have an alternative and it's just one person, I love that idea because I never really knew who to call or who to throw under the. Bust, cause, yeah, cause literally sometimes I just.
Can you do it and I can back up?
It's a tough one, I know.
See, I got off all my board stuff and I'm getting more. Yeah, that's fine, I can, I'll do it.
I mean, cause you'll be, you'll be here next Tuesday.
Not anymore, I'm going up there. Yes.
Shannon.
I, I will do it.
If you can at least start it out and then.
I'll do it and Pam's gonna back me up.
Just gonna pray for him.
I know where you live. All right, um, staff development.
I'd like to keep that.
Anybody else wanna get on there? Anybody else wanna get on there? Okay, technology, we've got Andy on there. Still wanna stay on there?
No, you, you could be on there.
Do you guys meet some, at all? No?
Not too often.
All right, I'll take that one too. Also. One one.
You're the.
Technology, yeah.
Okay.
Want one collaborative?
Yes, one one family collaborative. Christie, Pam.
Would love to stay on it. And I'd like to stay on that.
And Caitlin would like to stay on, does, or unless you wanna be on there?
I would love to be on that one.
Okay, then Val it is.
Caitlin would put Val on there. Such a great nominee.
Wellness is Christie.
I thought that was Pam, but yeah, I'll be on Wellness. Okay.
All right. And world's best workforce is all board members. All right, we don't need a motion for that, we just need a motion to.
Mr. Chairman.
Bless her's other, yes.
I think in the past we named the school attorney.
Oh, yeah, I think you're right, yep.
We had it on here. It's Maggie from. From Kennedy and.
Kennedy, Graven. Maggie, is it Wallner?
Wallner, W A L L N E R.
Yeah.
From, from Kennedy and Graven, Graven. We, we're already talking to them about some issues. They've done a good job for us.
Right. Do I have a motion to approve the school attorney as?
As Maggie Wallner or Kennedy, Graven, Wallner. I saw them.
Motion by Andy, do I have a second?
A second.
Uh, any discussion? If not. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Make sure you stop at their, at their little kiosk and get their freebies.
There you go.
Convention.
Okay, that has been so awesome.
Why that was kiosk job? Maybe we'll win some money again, we'll see.
All right, anything else that we missed or that had gotten missed that we need to discuss? Or is there any other information we needed to talk about? If not, do I have a? Oh, we gotta figure out what's the date on the next.
Um, the next one, two, three, four, it would be January twenty-fourth.
All right, so January twenty-fourth at seven o'clock. So a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Susan. Any discussion? Motion carries, meeting adjourned at seven thirty-one.